We're going to call ourselves the Lord. We ask everyone to stand at this side and give us a second of the Lord's Prayer and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we thank thee that we were able to ascend on Mount Everest, to eternity. Thank you, Lord, for our friends that we've learned to love through these meetings. Lord, we ask that you would be with rich women tonight in their water problems. Lord, we thank you that we're not in that shape. Lord, we know that all things work together, but, Lord, we don't always understand. Bless this meeting. May it all be done in decency and order and Jesus' time we pray. Amen.
On the pledge of allegiance, Jesus Christ, of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rockham. Councilman Son.
President.
Councilman Woodin.
President.
Councilman Daddin.
President.
Councilman Fletcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Fletcher. Councilwoman Vickers.
Here.
Mayor Fletcher.
Here.
For the Senator and Senator Kitter. We have a court. Alrighty, approval minutes from August twentieth. Give you a few minutes to look at that. Page is alive. Page is alive.
On page two, and the words from there, about six rows up from the bottom, the last word on the right says Thrasher instead of Thrasher for the engineer.
Alrighty, anything else?
The only thing I see is on page three, Julie's saying about Councilman Fletcher. He wasn't here.
Page three one.
Yeah, on the executive session.
Okay.
Julie's second back.
Anything else?
Anything else at all?
No.
If not, we entertain a motion to approve the amendments with the two corrections.
So moved.
So moved by Jacob. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor who've seen five, say nine. Any opposed, like, so, so ordered. Receiving the August two thousand point four financial statements.
Not a lot to look at, not a lot of, you know, we're at the Laram that came in for the month. My income for the month of August was forty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Expenditures for the month was seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. That's counted shortage for the month of thirty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Really wasn't anything in the expense. Expenses that jumped out, you know, traveler's remittance or insurance for the years. And that all came out. PA, we got twenty-plus thousand in just insurance payments.
Any questions for John? If not, we entertain a motion to approve the financial statements as presented.
Same.
So moved. We have a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor who've seen five, say nine.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, like, so, so ordered. Alrighty, the old business, town festival and car show, what day? Who's gonna start that?
I'll start and let Nicole Henderson help out.
Okay.
Alright, so far we have thirty-nine vendors that has already paid their money. We have forty-five that say they're gonna be here. The bands are all set up. The power is all set up. We've got the potty, portable potties all set up and ready to be brought in. We've got the bouncy house and the obstacle course for the kids. That's gonna be all free. And we've got some new vendors this year too, which I'm really excited about. Because they see us on Facebook and they called and we're setting them up, so. We're getting volunteers. If anybody else wants to volunteer that hasn't already said, please let me know, because we'll take all the volunteers we can get. We'll have two vans Friday night, two vans Saturday night. The car show will be on Saturday. They'll start registering at nine, right? I'll let you take over there.
Yeah, car show is nine to three. They'll do door prizes, fifty-fifty. Joey's Car Wash has given us an auto detailing, actually two of them, one for a prize, one we can auction off for him. So that'll be good. I've had lots of people already asking about registering, pre-registering, but we're just gonna let people register that day. I think it'd be too much of a mess to have pre-registered and... But lots of people say they're coming, so, cool.
And I will tell you this, when the brick hay, I've had fifty, I've written down there every time that somebody's called, I've had fifty people call me and ask me what time they're gonna be playing, so they, they bring a lot with them usually.
They do.
So hopefully we'll have a lot of people here.
Yeah, I think Saturday night would be pretty warm. Alrighty, any, any questions from anybody? Everybody make sure you come out next Friday and Saturday. If you want to stay all night, Friday night, you're welcome. Help next.
It's not this one.
Next weekend. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
A week from Friday.
Is that a week from Friday?
No, stick to the plan. Yeah, we will be staying. If anybody wants to or knows someone that wants to set up as a vendor, they don't have to tear their stuff down Friday and take it home and come back. Because we will be staying out here. Part of council and some other people will be staying out here Friday night all night long with the police officer. And then we'll get relieved about two o'clock if we can get the guys up and they'll come and relieve, so.
Hey, we're only about five minutes late.
She's probably gonna forget that.
Yeah. I told Dan when we were making the coffee, I was like, they're gonna think we overslept.
That's good fellowship.
Yeah, we always have a good time.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't break out any beer. Alrighty, that it, huh?
Too early for that.
It's too late.
Now, while we get there, it's too early.
Yeah, too early. Alrighty, next thing, we've got some mural approval and action needed, but.
Yeah.
You all have.
Well, as I previously mentioned last month, the measurements of the wall was six hundred and sixty square feet. He went, Mr. Blake Wheeler went to the wall. His, his vinyl was gonna be a little bit smaller, so it's actually gonna be five hundred and fifty square feet. So you're looking at eleven hundred dollars cheaper, because he's still at ten dollars a square foot. It would be, he does not need any scaffold. He could reach it with his ladders. If possible, the cracks, there are some cracks in the wall if they can be patched. He said it's not a, he said just if possible. He would need, if approved, he would need the first half of the payment so he could buy his material and his paint. Four weeks to complete the painting and three days to install, weather depending. And he said also if approved, along the top, if there could be, in the future, maybe some pipe of the French drain to help with the water run off, he said if not, it'll eventually ruin the, move out. But that's the last email I got from him.
I haven't heard anything else.
Okay. So he's kinda, he's just kinda waiting on us for that.
Would we be able to put the French drain in there, or would the state have to do that, or?
It's a state road and everything, and we could probably do it, get, get permission to do the state road to do that, but I'm thinking, you know, was there a lot of water running over that?
I honestly have never paid much attention to that. It didn't look like there was.
With the signs up there now and everything, I've never seen a lot of water running over.
Yeah, it's not doing damage that much, even from the picture that I have, it doesn't even, just at the top, I don't know if it's just decayed from.
Probably years, and they did, you know, mow all of that, put it on there.
Yeah, and it would be the dark blue and the yellow would be that full. And then we would worry about that painting that is actually. We'd get that done.
How long did you say it would take, three weeks?
Three weeks to install that, weather depending, and he'll start as soon as possible. As soon as he, like I said, he would need the first half.
Right.
For his materials and then four weeks for the painting.
And then like three days? Oh, three weeks?
Three weeks. I'm sorry, three days to install.
So let's just say five weeks total, basically, give or take.
Okay. Yeah, about five weeks.
Would his warranty cover even without the French drain?
Good question. I, yeah, I think, I don't know, if it's on our part, would it be our responsibility?
Probably would, yeah. What, maybe talk to, you know, see.
Does that mean it'd be worth it? If it voids his warranty, it'd be worth it to put in a new French drain.
Yeah.
I just never really noticed that, I mean, it's not like waterfalls or anything.
Water rolling over that.
And it could be where the, the grass.
There might have been. We can probably ditch that a little bit.
There's some rock in or something.
See my idea, just to kinda, you know, have that run down through there and off the sides. Alrighty.
That's about it.
Yeah, except to figure out what we, what we're gonna.
Yeah, and then designs, we do have possibly that picture, maybe the aerial view of Bell. I had our idea of obviously the train depot. Somehow incorporate maybe DuPont, the old sunhouse, the Veterans Memorial, and then whatever else we can come up with. If you just get that to.
I think it'd be nice, but the, the new Town Bell signs, maybe even a picture of this building. And, and then the...
Just don't want us so busy that you can't tell what it is.
I wouldn't mind even taking a couple pictures of caterpillar equipment and just putting something like that in there, because, I mean, they've been here in the town since back in the late fifties.
If it wasn't for CAD and DuPont.
No, you know, we wouldn't make it. And with the money we got out of Walker Machinery all those years, every street in town's been paved several times.
I agree.
The plant, you know, they give us seventy-five thousand dollars every year. And then, yeah, the other pictures, just, you know, the old things here in Bell.
Yeah, I think we should put the veterans thing in there.
Yeah, that's a, that was a good idea.
Yep.
And he's pretty creative, so, you know.
Yeah.
I think, I think that sounds like a lot, if we're trying to incorporate everything, but he could probably give us maybe a couple of.
Yeah.
You know, some areas and what we.
Yeah, he might be able to just pick up or picks up a couple little drawings real quick and just kinda put it together in there as he'll, as he envisions what it would look like on that wall and, you know, go from there.
Right.
With that being said, somebody wanna put that in the form of a motion that we expand fifty, fifty-five hundred dollars? Melanie made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nicole. All those in favor who've seen five, say nine. Any opposed, like, so, so ordered, so we'll, we'll get started on that. Alright, thank you all very much, and we'll look forward to seeing that. And then, I guess we gotta snap your all's picture and put that on the.
Yeah, yeah.
Alrighty, new business, Halloween party.
We're gonna, the Halloween party will be seven to eight. Of course, trick or treat will be six to seven on the thirty-first, which is Halloween night. That's what the county's come up with, so. It's gonna be kids thirteen and under. So, we ain't supposed to put that on the agenda and everything for... We haven't really decided how we're gonna do that yet, have we?
Well, probably send them next year.
Huh?
Probably send them next year, or last year.
Last year.
Next year.
Last year we gave them hot dogs and chips, because we kinda figured with them, one out, a lot of kids in the community doesn't get, not that a hot dog and chips are, you know, a decent meal, but a lot of them, you know, it's on weekday, a lot of them won't have food to eat before they go out. So we figured we could usually give them a hot dog and a bag of chips and something to drink up here, and then a little bag of candy. Because they're gonna get candy, you know, around the community, and we just figured that would help kinda support their stomachs.
Alrighty.
And we do need volunteers for that also, if anybody wants to volunteer. And it'll probably just be like, we, on the hot dogs, we just had ketchup mustard sat there. And if they said they wanted mustard, we put it on their forearm or ketchup or whatever, you know, put the wings and kind of, and... So it was pretty simple, just mainly for crowd control and kinda helping get everybody through the line.
And for games.
Yeah, and we got games this year. We had a few last year, but we did spend money and buy, I think it was nine or ten games, nine or ten noise games. So, we've got those that we'll set up in the gym, so if anybody wants to help with those, and we got some prizes to give out for that.
Alright. How many hot dogs? What do we do?
Last year we did two hundred, but I think probably two fifty, maybe, because we didn't have any left over. Matter of fact, a few of the kids came back in the last seconds. What do you think?
When I was last year on our street, everybody was rushing to get up here and get a cup at my house.
Really?
I didn't have that many last year.
That means you had a lot of candy.
Maybe you just wasn't giving up the right candy. It seems like we always see more up on this end, just because it's close.
Yeah.
And then we do that on our end.
Come and sit with us, we sit at the grade school, because we don't get any kids either. We give out candy then. We had a lot of people starting to come now, just to sit at the grade school.
That's what I was gonna say, sharing them usually goes to the grade school, or even if you wanted to bring your candy up here and give it out.
Yeah.
You know. I'd like to see eventually, I'd like to see that happen. That, you know, we'd have a couple areas that, you know, just the kids could go to those couple areas and then come up here and have a party. Because it's hard to have a party and play games and stuff and let them eat in an hour. It really is, even if we're ready to do it whenever they get in here.
And that's what they do around, they donate all the candy to the community center. They give out candy at the community center and do games and stuff.
And that might be something that we, you know, I consider later down the road. Yeah, safer that way too, really. I mean, you know, but I know it takes away from the...
Alrighty, next thing then we have is the fall town yard sale.
Yes, we've come up with the fifth of October. We figured that would be close to people getting, you know, the first part of the month and everything. It would be far enough away from the band that we have in October, but it would be far enough away, you know, from the festival. That's on a Saturday.
October fifth?
Uh-huh.
What time does that start?
Whenever you want.
Yeah, a lot of people have their stuff on seven or eight.
Yeah, just like the yard sale, but trying to organize it so a lot of people in town have theirs.
Oh, are you selling?
Huh?
Are you selling?
Just sell your stuff.
Everything that's in that garage?
Yes.
Do you wanna set a rain out date or a bad weather date?
The next week.
Just for the next Saturday.
When is the next Saturday?
That'd be the twelfth.
Weekend. Is there anything more, anybody got anything more to do? Or, or twelve?
That's Columbus Day weekend, the fourteenth, the Monday after that is Columbus Day, but that's really it.
It's also best football day, we're, we're.
Good, good.
Well, that's okay, I can say I'm watching football.
Well, I don't come on till noon, because that's plenty.
Oh, yeah.
Because you're shopping.
There's three.
Yeah. So let's, let's do that then, let's have the rain date or band day or whatever, we'll have that on the twelfth, which is the very next weekend. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
The next weekend?
Uh-huh.
Alrighty. Next thing you got is RHS Ripson High School project graduation donation request.
Didn't receive this actually right before last month's meeting, but the agenda already posted, so. Still got time, but Sarah Davis here in town is actually the treasurer, looks like, for project graduation for Ripson High School. I think everybody's familiar with what project grad is, we give to it every year, but anyway, they're looking for a donation.
What's your pleasure?
Haven't we in the past given five hundred?
Thanks, uh. We'll make that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, five hundred.
And we have a second? Second by Michael. Uh, we're about, alright. Okay, next thing you got on there is the police pension plan. Oh, yeah. All those in favor who've seen five, say nine. Any opposed, like, so? Alright, next thing you got is the annual report for the police pension plan. This is the municipal police pension plan, and it is for the, actually, the retired members. The two new members are in the new state plan that are here now, but, so, this is thing that we have to do every year to let you all know, and it looks like we started out with about a million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, close to that. By the time we paid the retirees their benefits and interest and administration and everything else, we ended up with a million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight sixty-three, twenty-five. And the second page of that shows you what everything's invested in. West Virginia Investment Management Board actually takes care of that through the state of West Virginia. And so it's done fairly good over the past several years, and, and you can see we were about a million five, we're now about a million five thirty-six. So it picked up about thirty-six thousand dollars in the one year.
Until, until this thing is a hundred percent funded, the town has to put money up every year, and then the state also puts money up every year. We've been had to do that for several years, right now, the pension is actually a hundred and twenty-seven percent funded. So we should never have to put anything else back into the pension. It'll basically
Fund itself.
Fill, fill the need that it's there for, which is all retirees. So nothing to vote on, this was just something we have to provide you guys.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on. E is early voting, mentioned that I think before, but we'll start up on October twenty-third and run through November second. This will be an early voting site, and with that being said, for that, we will pick up a thousand dollars from Canal County. So they will pay us to host the early voting site, so. That's something we've been doing for some time now. Any questions from anyone? If not, we'll move on. Next thing is the police car equipment bids, and that's pretty much what I handed you a few minutes ago for the lights and everything, for the police car and new cage and everything else that has to be done for the police car. You'll see that we've got one bid from Public Safety Solutions out of Hurricane. And that actually, if you look on page one and page two, over on the back page, the estimate total down there in yellow is fifteen thousand dollars. So that's lights, that's everything that would be needed and everything to put this thing on the road, other than striping. And we usually have Mr. Fiddler do that, and I think he's given us a bid in the past of about twelve hundred dollars to do that, so. The other bid that you have there is Billy McAllister Electronic Services Incorporated. This bid is actually sixteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. So you got a fifteen thousand dollar bid, a sixteen thousand, one forty-five, twenty-five. The equipment there thing is similar, and there's just different name brands, and, but I won't say similar, in the same places. And the one with public safety actually gives some lights down on the bottom, both sides of the car.
Is the Public Safety Solutions, is that the guy that's on sixty? In Hurricane?
On sixty, I think he is, I think he's down there.
Right, so, yeah, he's on the, he was saying August, Hurricane.
John, you'll see his email address is pinch B F D. He, he's from the pinch area and he's on fire department there. He's actually a full-time member of Charleston Fire Department. He does, he's on the side, he did, if anybody's seen the new Glasgow car that's up there in Glasgow today. He just finished up the car not too long ago. Pretty much every city of Charleston vehicle is done by John Coleman, so. Before, we've just been doing everything through E S I, but, you know, since we had another company, I said, hey, Before, we've just been doing everything through E S I, but, you know, since we had another company, I said, hey, look at him, see what you can do for us. And what's the pleasure?
I think we go with the, uh, cause I, I was looking here, and like you said, most of it is pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
It's standard, you know.
We, we had bids from last time, and pretty much the equipment, gave them the, uh, that list, and said, hey, whatever else, whatever the, uh. Uh, outfit for the cage for the back of the car and everything there, so, uh, pretty much looked at it. You'll see that on John, uh, on John's bid under Public Safety Solutions, over on the back page, he had, uh, uh, eighteen hundred dollars there. Uh, it was actually fifteen thousand, three hundred. He can actually get three hundred dollars more off of the, uh, uh. Not, not only the labor, but also the delivery and everything. So that's why he brought it down to fifteen thousand dollars, so.
That's pretty much the difference between the labor.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred dollar difference.
And that's, uh, because, uh, through, uh, errands, we had a three thousand dollar number, and he's looking at about half. For the, uh, you know, the labor and all that.
I think we go with Public Safety Solutions.
Okay, I'll put that in form of a motion. Okay. Have a motion on Melanie to accept the bid for Public Safety Solutions for fifteen thousand dollars. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, any discussion, sorry I asked. Uh, all those in favor, say, uh, say five, say nine?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, like, so? Alright. Uh, approval of men voices. Don't think we have anything to do with John. Personnel issues. Only thing I'll mention is, uh, we do have the one, uh. One gentleman still working Street Department, uh, that is still just our part-time guy. Uh, actually, Christian had some vacations scheduled already, so he will not be here for the fair, so we definitely said we would keep our part-time guy on. Also mentioned about to, uh, Kevin, who works the sanitary plan. He's actually going to work those two days too. And, uh, help Adam, all of them out, and then we'll keep, uh, our part-timer, you know, through about October fifteenth, and then probably. Let him, uh, go after that. That's, uh, slow down a whole lot and everything else, so, uh. So that's the only thing on personnel issues. Police Department reports. You have that report, uh, in your pocket. I will mention, our gentleman on, uh, Canal Street is back home. Uh, if anybody's been down that way, you've probably seen him. Uh, there is some, uh, people trying to get him some help. The same people I talked to with, uh. Adult Protective Services, they've been contacted again. They told me they closed the case. They're willing to, uh, take another look at him again, so we'll see what happens. I know one gentleman was going to approach him about buying the house, uh, so it's hard to tell what's gonna happen right now, so. Oh, but I, I don't think there was anything that I really.
Does he know that, like, it's basically already been sold for taxes and?
Uh, I don't know that he actually understands all that. But there's not much that we can actually do there. And definitely, you know, without being able to, uh, you know, get, uh, you know, some other services through, uh, Adult Protective Services or. Uh, you know, having a full-time building inspector or anything like that. Uh, I don't know if there's a whole lot more we can do, and, uh, I think we've talked to a little bit of everybody in the county, uh, about, about this situation. Just don't know what else is gonna be done. Any questions on the, uh, police report? Anybody see anything that you're wondering about? Alright, if not, we'll move on. Items from the mayor. Uh, we'll tell you that as of today, we do have a new owner of the Infuse Insurance Office on Sixth Street, Dupont Avenue. David Nell Torrey, who lives out on, uh, West River View Drive, did purchase it today from Danny Gill. And, uh, he tells me, and he sent me, you know, a text today, and, uh, said that he actually, um, is hoping to put a nail salon. And a barber shop in there to begin with. Uh, he would like to find another piece of property. He's asked me about the, uh, old building down there beside of the, uh, church, down there by the bank. Uh, the building that got torn down. He wants to know who he needs to contact. I told him he'd need to contact the owner of the property, which he had talked to him before. Uh, he says he'd like to buy that and put in like a, uh, a Mexican restaurant of some kind. So, uh, he did buy a house over on West Central Avenue, two doors down from me, and, uh, in between the two properties that, that we own. And, uh, he's actually rented that, and, uh, so he's got, you know, new setup there for rentals. Uh, but, uh, so I told him, I said, good luck. We're glad to have you in town for a business, so, uh. So we should see sometime, maybe in the next month or so, a barber shop and a nail salon, so. We'll see what happens and make sure everybody around uses them maybe, and, uh, keeps them here, so. Next thing is the, uh, Canal County. We've got a notice up out on the door. Fall cleanup is October fifth, I'll show you. So, uh, that will start at eight and end at four.
October fifth?
Uh, October fifth. So it'll be coming up in a couple of weeks.
Just in time for our yard sale.
Yeah.
You don't sell it, take it everywhere?
Yeah. So, uh, that'll be coming up, uh, so we'll, uh, see how that goes, and, uh. Uh, last thing I've got tonight was, uh, we did, and Mrs. Blue and Mark and I attended the, uh, meeting down to Rick Board a month, uh, month and a half or so ago. And, uh, with the, uh, Rick Board, it is for the Streetscape Project. Uh, so we did actually approve, uh, vendor G A I consultants at that meeting, and then the Rick Board actually got together this past Thursday, and, uh. It just so happened the chairman was out of town, so, uh, David Fletcher chaired that meeting as the vice chairman. And, uh, so we did approve it through the Rick Board, and, uh, I didn't have to twist anybody's arms, but it got approved, and, uh. So as of today, John and I signed a check for four thousand dollars, which was the, uh, grant we got from the Greater Canal Valley Foundation, which. We went to those meetings, and, uh, so that check was written and was sent out to the Rick Board. It was in the mail today. And that way, G A I consultants will start. Uh, there will be some seed money from Rick, uh, put together with that, so we won't have all the money into it, so. We'll go from there and let them start looking at this project coming up through bail with, uh, the new lighting or, you know, anything else that they could look at. Think maybe they would give us some ideas of what we can do through the Fifth Street Mail or Dupont Avenue. So, so at least that's, that's started, so we're, we're moving along with that, so. Uh, items from Town Attorney, Brad, anything? Alright. Okay. Items from Council. Jacob?
Nothing from me.
Nothing. Nicole?
Nothing.
Okay, Melanie?
You know I have something.
Okay.
The, uh, flags and the brackets and everything to go on the light poles. Uh, actually Shannon had given me a name, and I called those people. I'm gonna meet with them. Um, and we're gonna decide what kinda like sizes we need and everything. Um, and then I'll bring it back to Council, but they are way, 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 way cheaper than what we had before. So, you know, they tell me the same thing that they told me on the phone, you know, but I wanna see what, what they bought, that, um, we don't wanna get jumped, but.
Yeah.
So, but once I get that set up and everything, then I'll either get with you or let you know if you wanna go also.
Okay, I understand, I know.
Yeah. And that way we can, you know, once we get our new street lights and everything, then we can move to the brackets and then, you know. We're starting to get a little bit of business as well. Maybe they'll wanna put their business, you know, up on a flag, or maybe a veteran will wanna, veteran will wanna put. You know, some, or his family in memory of, you know, a veteran and something like that.
Okay. Alright.
And that's all I have.
Anything else? John?
Nothing.
I.
No sir.
Mark?
Sir.
And the only other thing I'll say too, and, uh, didn't say anything, but we got both of the banners up.
Yeah, I know, so it's, it's good.
Car show and the, uh, town festival.
Yeah, I texted it one day, cause it was all.
Yeah, yeah, but there wasn't anything I could do right there.
They fixed it last night.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll do somebody.
Who do you think's gonna do this for a fire department? I'm a jack of all trades. Yeah, when you got home, I got home about, uh, ten-thirty last night.
That was early.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it was an early day for me, so, alrighty. Approval for visitors to address council.
So who?
So, uh, Jacob. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, say five, say nine?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, like, so, so, uh, everybody?
I just have a comment about the garage sale on the fifth. We've been getting our, uh, notices a little bit late, so I'm wondering if the people are gonna have time to get it sorted, basically. You know, they're not gonna get the notification, cause we got ours, I think we got our notification for September, like about the third or something like that. So that was just, just a comment, Melanie, that I, I just wondered. I know we put it on the sign and maybe on Facebook, but, you know, I'm just saying that maybe people won't see.
Right.
In time.
Well, the reason we came up with that date is because they were bombarding the sand, cleaning, can we have yard sale, can we have yard sale? So, a- and this is something maybe I should bring up and see what you guys think. What if we say from now on out, I mean, as long as we're in, that it's gonna be the first Saturday of October? Instead of every year trying to come up with a date and everything, and then we can just let people know. You know, it's gonna be, I mean, we can let them know early, even in January, you know, the first Saturday of October, we're gonna have the.
First Saturday, like April, first Saturday of October?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
And then I can tell Lynn, she can put that on there. And I understand what you're saying, cause I thought about that too, but we're just having so many people wanting to have it, you know.
Right.
So, um, but I think if we come up with that date from now on, you know, the first weekend of April and the first weekend of October, I think we'll, we'll be good, then everybody will know.
It's bad. Our mail's terrible anymore. And, uh, and we've had, we've been bringing municipal service fee bills and sewer bills in, stating that I just got this yesterday or the day before. And it might be a week and a half after we sent them out.
Right.
And some of them have actually incurred a couple penalties, and we've actually waived a couple out of them.
So you might not get my license. I got it this month and got too much. I didn't get nothing, you got license.
So I don't know. Mail's terrible.
They did.
It don't seem like it's getting any better at all.
Well, you know, Al, who retired, and they got that rule, and she was deemed to do pretty good. I mean, she was really starting to do good. And she lives in Montgomery, so a place come open up there, so she applied for that. So now we're getting different ones again, so.
Yes, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, it's not great, but I think that's probably a great idea.
So it was sixteen for October?
First Saturday of April and first Saturday of October.
But I also heard that the personal master general had made a remark when he first came in, to tell him not to deliver the mail every day. He'd save it for two or three days, and then that way they'd save money.
And I think they did that.
That's more in the rural areas though. That's more the rural areas.
I think they do that for that too. Cause I might go five days without mailing that I have.
No, there's some, there's some jobs two or three days. We don't have any mail.
Where you can tell and deliver on Sundays.
Yeah, I don't want your complaint, man. I can bill everything.
Well, they do have a, uh, Sunday routes and everything, especially for, uh, some of the packages.
I think that's supposed to be.
Things like that, Amazon packages and all that. They've, they've got a contract to them. Uh.
They do that Saturday, Sunday, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Anybody? Anything else?
I had a question. It doesn't have anything to do about town, but down in Quincy, there was a company that was supposed to be in there, where I think it was eighty-four lumber. We building that.
That's a site there, though. What happened?
Uh, haven't heard anything. Uh, we don't know what's going on. They moved everybody out of that building and. So far, nothing's happened.
It was a recycling company.
Yeah, recycling company bringing in.
Wasn't it rumored that we was gonna lose tractors and what?
Uh, I heard that, but, uh, according to Chuck up there that was the manager, now his son's the manager, he said that they don't know anything about it.
I, I've, I've heard that rumored. I didn't know if it was true.
I think it's cause they raised the rent, that, and that's why one of the places up there didn't stay. I don't remember which one it was, but. I guess they decided they were making enough money they could pay it.
I don't know. Uh, the only thing I know of went out lately is that hair teak. They're no longer there. I think everybody else is pretty much staying, so. Alrighty. How about, uh, somebody want to make a motion with adjournment? Oh, I asked.
Yes. Um, did you ask her?
Yeah, I did say. Okay. Make a motion with adjournment?
So move.
So move. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say five, say nine?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so?